Good morning. Welcome to the May 21st meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. Let the record reflect that Supervisor Desmond is not present today.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov and can be heard live for free on 96.5 FM KUBU Radio. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, May 24th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff or assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please call the first item?
Our first item is public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda.
And do we have any members of the public that would like to address the Board with matters not on the agenda?
We do. We have about 21 public comments, and I'm going to bring them up for you.
Thank you.
And our first person is Sandy. If you can come down to the podium.
We're going to speak one after the other.
Okay, so is that order correct?
And Debbie.
Okay. Hi, Ms. Davis.
You each have two minutes.
Yes, good morning, Chair and Board of Supervisors. My name is Sandy, and I'm here as one of We the People. We thank you for agreeing to be servants of the people, for having taken your oaths of office to uphold and defend the Constitution. We are here in peace to give you notice and instructions so that you and your agents may provide due care. This notice of election maladministration has been given to the California Governor, the California Secretary of State, the California Supreme Court, to the California Senate and Assembly. We are now giving you a copy. In the past four years, we have witnessed the form of elections change from one day to an election season without the consent of the people. However, we have learned that the government was never granted any authority to change the ways of elections, not even in times of emergency. Despite adamant claims, there are no instances of election malfeasance, that the election process is to be trusted, is certified. We have learned that there are multiple cases of election maladministration, including in the city of Lodi, California, where a council member has been convicted of election fraud. We have included copies of court cases in the notice package just given to you. Please take notice that the people have assembled together, consulted peaceably by right, and realize that our servants in every state, as well as the federal government, have been led to believe that they are generating the basic rules in terms of elections. However, the people now know that the foundational law in the Constitution are the rules which must be followed with exact due regard. My colleague will continue.
My name is Dave. I'm with We the People. Please take notice that California Constitution Article 4, Section 2 grants power to the government to hold our elections on a single day. Furthermore, the California Constitution prohibits improper practices and disqualifies all votes from underage, non-resident, noncitizen, mentally incompetent, and felons incarcerated or on parole. Any deviation from the Constitution results in nullification of election. Maxim 4060 states where the law prescribes a form, the nonobservant of it is fatal to the proceeding. The main object of government is the protection and preservation of personal rights, private property, and public liabilities. The government just serves for our benefit as public officers, trustees, servants of the people. Since this Board has a history of certifying elections that have not followed the exact form specified in the Constitution, we are very concerned that another maladministrated election will occur in our fair county. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie. I'm with We the People. Please take notice that in our republican form of government, all servants have sworn to protect our rights to the constitutional elections as a condition to be hired as trustees. As an elected official, do you believe it's your duty to always uphold the form of lawful elections as written in the Constitution? Or do you believe that you've been granted authority to conduct elections, count the votes, and certify election results that deviate from the Constitution? If so, please show constitutional authority granting you that power to change the form of the people's elections within the next 15 days, sworn under penalty of perjury by affidavit, and posted this granted authority conspicuously notifying the public and all agents, or you agree by acquiescence that all statements in this notice to be true and fact. If you cannot show where you got the authority and you take any action to certify future elections which do not follow the Constitution's, your actions will be construed as being done with malice, intent, full knowledge, and purposeful transgression against your trust and indenture, your contract with the people. That would be the Constitution. This notice is given in peace and with the love of Christ that you and your agents may provide due care to those who have all political power, the people. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Catherine. We the people have studied and learned we have a guaranteed right to proper and lawful elections. Last week, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled nine to zero in the Smith versus Sporizzi case that shall means shall. Furthermore, John Locke, a father of fundamental law in America, explains that if servants change the way of elections, those are not to be considered valid elections. The California Constitution, Article 4, Section 2B, says, "Elections shall be on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November of even-numbered years." The Webster's American Dictionary of 1828 defines the word "day" as "the whole time period of one revolution of the earth on its axis," or 24 hours, called "the natural day." And when a legal instrument is dated, a day begins at the end at midnight. And the maxims of law say, "Where the law prescribes a form, the nonobservant of it is fatal to the proceeding, and the whole becomes a nullity." Therefore, as one of the people, I am instructing you, as my public servants, to immediately return back to the foundational state and federal election laws as seen in the Constitution's. It is the will of the people that you correct all errors and nullify any elections that do not meet the prescribed form by the people. I am saying this in peace and with the love of Christ that you may provide due care to those who have political power, we the people. Thank you.
Tom?
Hello, my name is Tom Sierconic. I'm here to express some concerns over the road conditions in the unincorporated community of Carmichael. The Department of Transportation for Sacramento County has presented some information on the pavement condition index, which is PCI. Yeah, you can see that. And they have determined that Sacramento lies in the poor condition, the PCI index numbers of 25 to 49. And then they provide some examples of those. Here's a poor condition, which looks pretty good to me, with an index of 46. Next, another poor condition of 34, still looks pretty decent, is pretty flat. And then PCI of 25, very poor, still looks pretty good to me. However, the roads and conditions in the unincorporated community of Carmichael are much worse. And there's a corridor that starts at Sunrise Boulevard on the west and moves through Fair Oaks and Carmichael and through into I-80, through which thousands of people pass each day. And I'm going to, I took the liberty of taking some pictures of those PCI locations and what the roads look like. So if we start at Fair Oaks Boulevard near Sunrise, it looks pretty decent there. And here's a start of, I'll go through a number of these, showing you just what the road really looks like in comparison to what the index says. Fair Oaks Boulevard, again, moving west. Another one further west. Still Fair Oaks Boulevard, moving towards the town of Carmichael. And another one, Fair Oaks Boulevard, close to Manzanita. And I think the last one for Fair Oaks Boulevard, showing you that they look way different and way worse than the poor conditions that Sacramento in general has. So then we move into the road of Cypress Avenue, and it gets even worse as we approach I-80. Another one for Cypress Avenue. And a third one for Cypress Avenue. This is fairly typical. I'm not, you know, going just on the places that are bad, but these are just examples. And then we move from there to Pasadena Avenue, which then connects through Auburn Boulevard to I-80. So we need your help to allocate the necessary funding to solve this problem, which has been going on for many years.
Sir, can you please wrap up your comments? The time is up.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Bring it back here. So next is Elisa.
Good morning. For those of you that do not know me, my name is Elisa Dar, wife of Jaime Narano that was killed in 23 seconds from the time the sheriff arrived, 23 seconds, to my husband lying dead at my feet. I was then treated like a dog, no, worse than a dog, was not allowed into my home for more than six hours, couldn't I get my life-saving meds? Lied to by the sheriff, threatened with the rest if I didn't talk to the chief, denied being by my husband's side. I called for help, and all I received was a dead one. Mental illness is not a crime. It can happen to any one of us, but if you are black or brown, you get killed. It's not a sport. It is a sport to these officers, a notch on their belt. I was promised help after this happened. Where is the help now? I need the police report. 19 months, and you guys are still investigating. What are you investigating? I need closure for me and my girls. We need the law to change on how mental illness is treated. The laws need to change. It has happened too many times to our people. You guys are not God. You guys cannot decide who will live and who will die. Jaime Narano, Caitlin Footman, Marquise Chapel, Christopher Gilmore, all are growing through it. We did not receive the help that our taxpayers are paying. We need to train these officers. How many more would this happen to? I pray that no one else should go through this. It is so life-threatening. Say his name, Jaime Narano. And my granddaughter would like to say something. Go, baby, we have time, hurry.
Hi, my name is Natalia Narano. We need justice for my grandpa. Can you please help us open the report for my mama and my grandma?
Thank you.
That is my dad. I want to open up with collective demands. Release the full sheriff report from my dad's case, Jaime Narano. Drop all charges against Caitlin Footman. Drop all charges against Marquise Chapel. And return Christopher Gilmore's cellphone immediately. My name is Erica Narano. I'm not here to remind you what was happening to my dad, but I'm here to remind you, Mr. Serna, of the promises you falsely made to my family. You said you were going to help. It's almost two years. We ain't seen a lick of help. I'm also here to remind you that mental health isn't a crime, but murder is. I'm also here to remind you that that could happen to any of your families. The only difference is, my family got killed. Yours would be escorted with dignity, grace, and love. It's not a crime to live in poor neighborhoods, but it is to delete personal footage. And that is what Sacramento Sheriff did to my family and that of Bobby's. Christopher Gilmore's, I'm sorry. My dad deserved love, compassion. I will be his voice. I will be the voice to many others that are going through the same thing as my family. Sacramento sheriffs are murderers. They need better training. They need better training. Don't train men with guns with guns. Don't send men with guns to mental health crises. Don't send men with mental health crises with guns to help mental crises. And I see you shrugging and dusting us off. This can happen to your family, Mr. Serna, but it didn't, so you don't care. You see that corner? This whole corner are people going through the same thing my family's going. The only thing is, I have two years under my belt. That family right there got a couple months. They got a long, 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 long way of healing. My dad was a fisherman, was a welder, was a landscaper, was a best friend, was a father. My best friend. He was a pillar in the community. He's gone now. Do you know how many kids in the neighborhood no longer have that role model? A lot. His name won't be forgotten. Say his name.
Jaime Narano.
Say his name.
Jaime Narano.
Say his name.
Jaime Narano.
My hero will not be forgotten, and his death will not be in vain. This will not happen to more families. As long as I am here, I will be the voice of the voiceless, and I will continue to fight for my dad, because that's what he would do for us.
Meg White?
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Meg White. I'm a resident of District 4, for better or for worse. That's with Phil Serna. And I'm here to also uplift the voices of those who can no longer speak, as well as the families who we've destroyed. We, as a community, have failed so many. What could have been a mental health call has turned deadly. We look at Daryl Richards, who died in the surrender position unarmed and in a schizophrenic episode. We just heard about Jaime Narano.
Hang on, I'm sorry. I want to make sure that your photo gets, there we go. Thank you. I stopped the clock for you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That was a few years ago with Jaime Narano. And just a few months ago, we also look at Christopher Gilmore. He was also killed during a mental health crisis by the SAC sheriff in front of his family, and they're still here seeking that their rights actually come to stop the suffering that they're dealing with. We, as a community, have failed so many, but we do have some that we could do right by. Currently, Marquise Chapel, who unfortunately suffers with some mental health delays, and as a result of that, was shot several times in the back by the sheriff and is now facing a whole litany of charges. Similar story with Caitlin Footman, a second-grade teacher with no history of mental health issues at all, who was brutalized when her family called for help, who was put in dehumanizing holds, beaten, and eventually force-medicated, and subject to what the sheriff's own reports say was pain-compliance techniques. These families deserve justice, and our community deserves better from our tax dollars. We demand that you release the full sheriff report on Jaime Narano, that you drop all of the charges against Caitlin Footman and Marquise Chapel, and that you return Christopher Gilmore's cellphone. Briefly, I have one more story that I want to tell. This is Sharona Stingley, grandfather and father. During a schizophrenic episode, when he had his hands up, the sheriff was again called for help, or 911 was called for help, and the sheriff was who responded. They immediately pulled Sharona's hood over him and hit him on the head with their flashlight. He also was unarmed. They beat Sharona so badly that he never woke up again. Something has to be done about this. While I understand that you are not the sheriff, you are, in fact, charged with oversight as well as their budget. And so while I'm sure that poor Eric Jones is tired of my emails, something more has to be done. Something more should be done for Sharona, and something more needs to be done for all the families that are coming after him. Sharona Stingley should be alive today. Say his name.
Sharona Stingley.
Ronald?
We know that vaccines are killing people of color, blacks, Latinos, indigenous people, at about two times the rate of white Americans. Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Javier Becerra said, "That April 14th, 2022," quote, "is still on the White House's YouTube channel." Hello, my name is Ronald F. Owens, Jr. I was a public information officer with the California Department of Public Health for more than 14 years. I retired on December 31st, 2023. I share with my supervisors on multiple occasions what Becerra said. I also shared data showing thousands of COVID-19 vaccine injuries and thousands of deaths. I recommend that California Health and Human Services Secretary Mark Golly and Governor Gavin Newsom be apprised of this information. Unfortunately, management didn't take this information seriously. They made it about me and not you, and they disciplined me. They withheld life-saving information from you and 40 million other Californians. According to California Department Health and Safety Code 101025, quote, "The Board of Supervisors of each county shall take measures as may be necessary to preserve and protect public health. Consistent with your mandatory duty to protect the public health, this Board should do the following: Number one, immediately stop administering COVID-19 vaccines. Number two, direct public health officer to investigate COVID-19 vaccines. Number three, inform Sacramento County residents at public hearing about COVID-19 vaccines. And number four, notify 57 other county Board of Supervisors that Secretary Becerra said
Can you wrap up, sir?
...COVID-19 vaccines are killing people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby?
Comments?
Yes, thank you so much. My name is Bobby, and this is Jamie. We are the sisters of Christopher Gilmore, who was shot and killed during a mental health crisis on the 23rd of March of this year. That day, I found my brother unresponsive and bleeding from self-inflicted cuts to his arms and legs. I called 911 and requested an ambulance, at which time four officers arrived, one being a K-9 unit. I told them that my brother would never harm anyone, he was just harming himself. My brother regained consciousness and opened the garage doors, standing there naked and lethargic from all the blood he had already lost. He was met with cops all pointing guns at him and demanding him to come outside. As he complied with officers, he was shot six times up close with shotgun rubber bullets, right after he was shot three times with lethal rounds, killing him. He was never given a chance. They could have used pepper spray, a taser, or even the K-9 that they brought, and was left in the car all day. As I desperately asked an officer, "Can you please help my brother save his life?" That officer looked at me with a smirk on his face and said, "No." I begged every cop there to please try and help my brother as they left him on the ground laying there fighting for his life. These cops were never there to save a life, they were there to end it. They showed no compassion or concern when it came to my brother or my family. That is why I'm asking that it is mandated that all officers take and pass a mental health class as well as mental health exam, because a high-stress and high-risk job like law enforcement is essential for officers to have a understanding of their own mental health and how it affects their actions. Also, I think it is crucial to hold police officers accountable for their actions. This includes strict consequences for those who abuse their powers and use excessive force. We demand that our law enforcement agencies prioritize the well-being and safety of all individuals regardless of their race or their background. My brother, our brother, Christopher Gilmore should still be alive today. Say his name. Christopher Gilmore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherry?
Thanks for having me talk. Hello, my name is Sherry Martinez. I've been a resident of North Sacramento for 25-plus years, homeowner for over 20. Over the years, I've remained active in my community. I volunteered for Front Street Animal Shelter, participated in community cleanups and other events. I was also a member of Deo Paso Heights Community Association. More recently, I have volunteered for Bike Party Sacramento, and I've participated in the City of Trees Mardi Gras Parade. I currently lead two bike rides twice a week, one serving the community of North Sacramento and the other downtown Sacramento. On August 12th, 2023, approximately 4:53, while enjoying the weather with friends riding bikes to a second Saturday group ride, a careless and aggressive driver first swerved around a vehicle that was yielding to two pedestrians at the intersection of J. and 24th Street, then proceeded to intentionally swerve towards me, striking me with his Chevrolet Avalanche, causing me and my bike to roll three times, and I lost consciousness. He then fled the scene but was stopped short due to a second Saturday event on K Street. That is when one of my friends came to my aid, while the other raced to the corner and took his keys out of the ignition. Several witnesses called 911, and authorities shortly arrived. They arrested him on the scene, and I was rushed to the hospital. He then made bail the next morning, and I remained in the hospital for four days. I suffered four broken ribs, a punctured lung, a broken clavicle, concussion, cracked-and-chipped teeth, and a severe tissue damage, deep tissue damage that still affects me today. Since then, the DA has failed to press charges against a man who was identified as Caleb Toddman, a delivery manager for a cannabis company based out of LA, who has existing priors for battery on a spouse and abuse intentionally causing or attempting to cause bodily injury. It is confusing to me how and why a person bodily injury. It is confusing to me how and why a person with history of violent intent is not being held accountable for his actions. Is it because of his position that he holds with the cannabis company, or has someone simply dropped the ball and swept his crime under the rug? Please understand my frustrations with the lack of action being taken in this matter. This man assaulted me and nearly killed me, and I deserve justice. I believe the city of Sacramento deserves a better public safety image than this, and I will continue to make good use of my voice, being that I am lucky enough to have one to have survived this traumatic event. I feel this man should not be allowed to operate a vehicle without any ramifications.
Ms. Martinez, could you wrap up?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Kevai Floyd, and I'm picking up where Sheri left off. Sheri's been a good friend of mine for many, many, many years, and has been an upstanding community member. And what happened to her was an absolute travesty. To watch that woman suffer through her recovery of this violent episode, and this man has not been held accountable for his crimes. The DA has dropped the ball. The police have said that they have turned on, over all of the information to the DA's office. The DA office has said they don't have enough information. I don't know what they need when they have multiple witnesses to the crime. Before the crime, he was committing reckless driving, and then when he hit her, and then what he did coming up on K Street. If it hadn't been for the community stopping him, more people would have been hurt. But what we want to see is you guys helping us hold the DA accountable for what this has happened, and for an upstanding citizen, that this could have happened to any one of you. You know, this is Bike Party. This is an upstanding event that raises community awareness and makes the community happy. Seriously, we need your help holding the DA accountable and making sure this man is charged with a crime. Can we count on you? Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mark?
Good morning, Supervisors and esteemed staff. I'm here to talk about the need to start planning for an immediate, immediate need to start planning for a very critical public need, cemetery space. We're out of it. And I'm here to start that whole process going. I recently had to bury my daughter and realized there's only one space left if you're not in the North County, covered by those cemetery districts, and in the South County, covered by the Elk Grove Cemetery districts. For the rest of us, that's in the middle of our county, let's say. There's only one place left, and that is the Oddfellow Cemetery. That's the only affordable place left, I should say. The other one is East Lawn. It's private. It's expensive, and I could tell you, most of your constituents can't afford it. So what do we have left? You have one cemetery, excuse me, one cemetery left that has about five to 10 years' worth of burials left, and that's it. This comes up about every 50 years or so, because cemetery's planned for about 50 to 100 years' worth of burial, and we're at that spot. I've already spoken to the city council, and I know they've mentioned to, to LAFCO, which is really where we're going here, that an MSR Municipal Service Review needs to be done. The last one was done 20 years ago, in 2004. I'm not sure if LAFCO is actually going to act on it unless there's some interest from the board as well as the city. So I know Supervisor Frost is on LAFCO. This, this really can be handled by any one of you, because it affects every single district here, all of your districts. It's going to take, what, five years? We know how long planning for a new, in the end, it's going to be a new district. I know nobody really likes new districts, but that's what's needed. We're all going to die. We all need a place to be buried. So the planning needs to start immediately. I would recommend that this staff reach out to LAFCO, start the MSR process, so that you eventually can put in the petition for a, a application for a new district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I did receive your correspondence, and I have made inquiries with staff, so.
Thank you.
Bobby?
Thank you for that. Hi, you guys. Thank you for your time today. My name is Bobby Wooton, and I'm here on behalf of Kalen Footman. She's my daughter's godmother, in addition to a second-grade teacher that worked in the Thomas School District. She had a mental health breakdown due to many, many microaggressions at her job, due to the abuse from Amy Whitten, which was the principal. And she, she did, she sucked. She wanted help. She asked for help, and she didn't receive it from the school district nor from her place of employment. She was, she got incarcerated, and her mental illness breakdown was criminalized, excuse me. We have to get to a place where mental illness is not looked at as a crime. A little of my history, my mother and grandmother were both mentally ill. I mean bipolar, schizophrenic, and many more. And we know, I know, when you meet people where they're at, and you're compassionate, and you're, you know, kind and understanding, opposed to wanting to look at them as a threat, those situations can definitely be de-escalated. I'm here today definitely to ask for her charges to be completely dropped. She does not deserve to lose her teaching credentials due to a mental illness breakdown. I also, we want the police report released for Jamie, the charges dropped against Marquise, and return Christopher's cellphone. As you see, there's many of us over here in this corner. We are all of color, and it just shows how we're being treated as a people. We do know that Caucasians, deaf white people get treated much differently in the judicial system. We just are really looking for equality, and please, let's make a change. We have to stop letting the police, train the police, and we need outside agencies to, to help with this. So please take this into consideration. We appreciate your time today. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, yes. My name is, hello, guys. Hi, yes. My name is Andrea Newsom. I'm the mother of Marquise Chapel. On March 5th, 2024, my son was gunned down by Sac Sheriff with no probable cause as he feared for his life in an attempt to run. He was shot twice in his back, as I was denied access to the hospital and any other information. This happened seven days after he turned 18. My son remained in the county jail where he was not treated fairly, and as my son do suffer from mental health. Mental health is real, and we are seeking justice. As I'm demanding charges to be dropped, sorry, I'm asking to be, charges to be dropped from Marquise Chapel. I'm asking for his video to be released from the Sac Sheriff Department. I'm also asking for a release of Jamie Navarro's family, police report, charges against Kalen Footman, drop his charge from Marquise Chapel, and Christopher Gilmore's cellphone to be returned. Sorry. No more budgets increase and to improve law enforcement trainings. More cops trainings. Cops is not the answer. Sacramento law enforcers must have training from outside agencies that are social justice center without increasing the budget, budget in law enforcement. I'm asking you guys to say his name, Marquise Chapel, and I'm asking for charges to be dropped. I'm asking for video footage, and I'm asking for support. Marquise Chapel.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Heather Woodford. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I've been working as a social worker in Sacramento County since 2012. I've been a resident of Sacramento County since 2001. As you have been hearing from these family members, our neighbors, our community members, you don't, you know, we, we know statistically, and we know personally, that black and brown folks who are experiencing mental health crises are much more likely to face violence, whether that's at the micro level of having police forces called on them, whether that's less compassion within mental health services, whether that's actually access to mental health services to begin with, or whether that's police violence. We know statistically and personally that that's true. So in the name of justice for our neighbors, Jaime Naranjo, Kalen Footman, Marquise Chapel, and Christopher Gilmore, we are making, as community members, the following demands. We demand a full release of the sheriff's report for Jaime Naranjo to his family. We demand dropping all charges against Kalen Footman. We demand dropping all charges against Marquise Chapel, and we demand a return of Christopher Gilmore's cellphone. With the rest of my time remaining, I would like for us to sit in silence and consider, who do you know in your life that has struggled with mental illness? Think about that. Would you want them to be treated the way that these folks, family members, have been treated? Everybody knows someone who's struggled with mental illness. Thank you for your time.
Keon?
Ms. Martinez, we are in receipt of your information.
Real talk. What bunch of cowards shoot a naked suicidal man during a mental health crisis? What dishonorable wretches beat a schizophrenic man while they're handcuffed, pleading for their life and begging for their daughter? Or shoot an 18-year-old kid in the back? What frightened shills shoot a man in front of his wife after just 23 seconds of entering his front lawn? As you all just heard from these families, they belong to the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. I'm here demanding justice for the families of Jaime Naranjo, Sharona Stingley, Christopher Gilmore, and the families of Kalen Footman and Marquise Chapel, who have survived being brutalized and unjustly charged in the hands of Sacramento sheriffs. And despite known histories of mental health illness and having direct access to the Community Wellness Response Team, which, which has a team of 24/7, 365-day-a-year, uh, mental health clinicians and peer support specialists who are tasked to respond to these sorts of crises, the sheriff's dispatch routinely seems to be failing or refusing to direct those calls to this new team. But they enjoy an outsized proportion of our budget, which Sacramento County law enforcement has been found to shift as much as 70% of our discretionary dollars towards law enforcement and the carceral system, uh, even as we are facing a 40% staffing shortage among mental health workers in the county. I am calling, I, it is unacceptable to allow these fatal and traumatic outcomes to continue. And as our elected representatives, you are not powerless in this matter. You actually have the power of your public platform and the county's purse strings to hold the sheriff's department accountable and force them to actually follow the law and their own procedures. So with that, I urge you to demand the sheriff release its investigation report to the Naranjo family, demand that the sheriff's return Christopher Gilmore's cellphone to his family, and call for all charges to be dropped against Kalen Footman and Marquise Chapel. I'm also urging you to make immediate policy shifts, including improving 988 calls to ensure that the CWRT is sent to every mental health crisis call. I would also ask you to empower the civilian oversight body of the Community Review Commission, Inspector Generals, by giving them enforcement power to investigate such officer-involved shootings. And I am going to finish, as well as publishing clear, uh, clear rules and disciplinary actions for the sheriff's department, which it currently does not do, so that members of the public can know how and when sheriff's deputies may be held accountable for breaking departmental procedures. I would also urge you to reject any upcoming budget increases for this fiscal year.
Thank you, Kea.
And reinvest those funds into the, into behavioral health services and address this mental health staffing shortage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Hi, thank you for letting me come today. Um, I just want to represent my brother. He just didn't have a mental illness. He was a kind, loving father, a brother, an uncle. He was just the kindest person with a mental illness, and I'm asking you, from the bottom of my heart, to please make changes to the Sacramento Sheriff's Department and getting them mandated, make them take mental health classes, so when they do arrive, that they're able to help them. This kind guy that just was struggling. I just, I'm just, I'm sorry. Just please, really take a look at it, and please hold them accountable for what they do to them. They are family. They're part of our family. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes your public comments, Chair.
Thank you, Clerk. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Jones, obviously, we've heard a great deal today on off-agenda matters about ongoing circumstances involving the sheriff's department and very unfortunate, the very unfortunate circumstance of those family members who have been cited here today as, as being victims from the intervention of, of our law enforcement agency. None of us here is the sheriff, a separate elected individual. None of us here is the DA. I do agree that we certainly do have a bully pulpit we can use, and my commitment to, to help, as was acknowledged earlier, I feel I've done to the best of my legal ability. However, what I would encourage you to do, as I've done in the past after hearing these testimonials, is I would like you to coordinate, I'll leave it up to you, whether it's editing the, the recording of the testimonials today, working with Metro Cable, or summarizing what you've heard today. But I do believe it's best coming from you, at the direction, at least of this supervisor, to make sure that Sheriff Cooper and our DA hear, hopefully verbatim, what we heard here today from the family members. There's a big part of this that I feel is missing, which is, and it's, it has to do with the, the structure of elected bodies. And again, the DA is not, not here, and the sheriff's not here. Those are the appropriate audiences for where we are in terms of investigation and prosecution. We don't investigate, we don't prosecute. They do. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Frost?
I just want to extend my deepest sympathy to all the families, and I want to thank you for coming down and speaking to us and making us aware of, of your horrible dilemma. We're not unaware, and I, I know I'm not allowed to speak too much on off-agenda, but I did want to ask Mr. Jones if our Inspector General might, is working with these families, or if there's a way. I know that he, he functions as kind of a liaison and can sometimes help families communicate better between the sheriff. I'm not sure if that's already happening.
Yes, Supervisor Frost, and to Supervisor Serna's earlier, yes, I will absolutely make sure the sheriff and district attorney are, are aware of everything said here today. And then also to Supervisor Frost, yes, the Inspector General, we meet frequently. He is aware, Kevin Gardner is aware of these specific incidences and is working with the sheriff's office, and will review the investigations once that they are complete and handed over to him.
And sometimes, I know, the information is really important, and a case can be negatively impacted if it's released too soon. So sometimes there's a reason for, for not releasing information before it's properly processed. So anyway, I also want to say that I did read Mr. Ronald So anyway, I also want to say that I did read Mr. Ronald Owens' letter, and I watched the video from Secretary Becerra, and I was deeply concerned at Secretary Becerra's comments. And I do think that we should have more of a conversation into, you know, the shot, the vaccine shot, and why is it that Comirnaty was approved, but it was never approved for manufacturing and distribution in the United States? And why is it that we can see so many people who have had an adverse reaction to this shot, and yet we just keep giving it even after the emergency use authorization should be null and void because the emergency's been canceled? We keep saying this is safe and effective, but in truth, there is something wrong here that we can't look at this, and I think it should be investigated.
Counsel, are we getting on squishy area here?
I think we should wrap it up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We do have, we mixed up some cards, I believe, and so we do have more off-agenda items, speakers, a few more that we will entertain.
If I could ask for help to bring up item six.
Christopher Gilmore, remember their name!
Thank you.
Mike Gilbert.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Sasha Rutter!
Thank you, Ms. Naranjo.
Mike Gilbert.
If you stand in the middle of the two mics, your voice will project louder.
In the middle?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, my name is Mike Gilbert. I am a social worker for Child Protective Services. I am currently assigned to the welcoming homes. Inside those homes, we house children with severe mental illness, drug addictions, severely emotionally disturbed children. And the law, as it's currently written, allows these children to refuse placement and not go to the facilities they need to be in. As a result, they're stuck in our care. So we, in these facilities, we have a mixture of kids, some with drug addictions, severe mental illness, severe behavior disorders, and that's just what we're dealing with. We do not have the facilities to care for these children, and they are very violent and very dangerous at times. The working conditions inside the welcoming homes is unlike anyplace else. We've had over 20 staff assaults in the last nine months, including staff sprayed with aerosol spray, hit in the head with coffee pods, you name it, punched, slapped, including two staff members that were off work due to injury. Every day, we work in conditions where their children are using drugs in the homes, and we cannot stop them. Just yesterday, I walked into a room filled with meth smoke. We do not have the proper ventilation or equipment to combat these conditions. These are illegal working conditions, and they are also OSHA violations. We've been working in these conditions for over a year. We don't have adequate security, and we're tired of it. We are tired of it. It is time that you all act, and you have all been entrusted with the care and the supervision of our department, and you've got to your place in your career because you're leaders and you make smart decisions. I think it's time to consider the civil repercussions that may be coming, the possible class-action lawsuits. We are tired, we're not going to deal with it anymore. It's very dangerous. None of you get up and go to work and worry about a kid having a gun, or pulling a knife, or busting out your car windows, or beating you up. You don't deal with that, we do. We are absolutely on the front lines of this.
Mr. Gilbert, could you please wrap up your comments?
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
Okay, Tezra.
Oh, it's Tezra? Yeah. We're a little, good? Okay, we're a little bit out of order. My name is Priscilla, and I'm '08 board member, and I've been employed with DCFAS for 14 years. Over the past year, I've seen our program take a horrendous turn. Since the welcoming homes have been open, up and operating, staff have been continuously put in situations they should never have been put in in the first place. We've been physically assaulted, spit on, slammed against walls, blenders thrown at our head, threatened, and thrown to the ground. Multiple cars have been vandalized, and windows have been blown out. I really could go on and on. DCFAS employees are exposed to dangerous drugs every day within these homes. Kids smoke marijuana and blow it in the face of employees, and we are told there's nothing more we can do. Employees administer lifesaving Narcan to children that overdose, and we're told there's nothing more you can do. Dozens and dozens of incident reports have been given to management only to be told there's nothing more we can do. California labor law states, "A hostile work environment typically refers to a workplace severe, distracting to a victim's job duties, physically threatening, or unrelenting." For a workplace to be considered a hostile work environment in California, the presence of harassment must be pervasive to the point that victim and others find it abusive and feel threatened. These are the working conditions that our family service workers, child development specialists, and engagement social workers endure every single day. There's nothing more we can do. That's all we're being told. So my question is this, who are the people that actually can do something?
Thank you.
Hello, Board of Supervisors, my name is Angel McMurray. I'm a child development specialist. I work at the welcome homes and at court services for CPS. I'm here because of everything what they have said, but I've also wanted to touch bases with the safety and also with, for the children. I have youth that come to me in fear of staying in the homes. They sleep on the couch because they don't want to be in the back of the rooms, because the way the layout of the home is the rooms are in the back and staff are normally in the front. And so when other youth are getting bullied, they will, you know, come to staff or the ones they trust, and they will say, hey, I don't want to be here anymore, and so they will leave. So they don't feel safe. Secondly, we have janitorial services that come out only three times a week for 15 minutes. We get a lot of in-and-outs with the girls, with the CSEC children especially, and they come back, and there's a lot of unsanitary issues going on in the home. And us, CDSs, are the ones who have to go in and clean up for the next kids who are coming in when we get a heads up that there's more kids coming into the home. There's no place for breaks or for lunches. On top of children bringing in weapons, we have a lot of neighbors that come to us getting very upset because we are parking our cars in front of their homes, and so they will get very upset, threaten staff that they don't like it when we park in front of their homes. The children sometimes will kick the ball over the fence, and also the neighbors will get very upset because, hey, I got a gun, you kids stay off my property. So it comes back to us, and we have to notify our supervisors. Let's see here. And then also with the food, we have a lot of children that have allergies, and we're putting other children at risk with allergies and being exposed because we share the refrigerator. And so that becomes a problem with, it's inconsistencies with that. That's about it for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hume, would you like to wait for the next speaker? Okay.
Okay, Tezra.
Good morning, my name is Tezra Sledge. I'm a business agent at UPE. I recall standing here in front of you guys not too long ago, along with my boss Ted Samara, and speaking with you about the working conditions for our social workers, child development specialists, and family service workers over at the welcoming homes. We have been dealing with this for over a year. My understanding is that these welcoming homes aren't going anywhere, and my understanding is also that the department director's hands are pretty much tied as to what she can do. So we are here yet again. They were supposed to have some type of self-defense training over a year ago. That has yet to happen. Like they said, these workers are being assaulted, they are going into working conditions where these kids are smoking meth, they're smoking marijuana, they're overdosing on a regular basis. The young ladies, unfortunately, that happened to be CSEC youth, are returning to their pimps, taking them food, bringing the pimps to the homes. I had one of the engagement social workers call me to say that, you know, she walked into a situation where one of these men was actually in the home with the youth in the bed, having sex in a county welcoming home for the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services, CPS. You are not protecting these kids, you are doing them a disservice. You're doing the staff a disservice by having them go into these working conditions every day. If you, Board of Supervisors, had to go into this work, these working conditions, would you show up to work every day and deal with these children that are there threatening you, threatening your lives? At the boys' home, two of the young men, I don't know what happened, what they did outside of the home, but two masked assailants ran into the home after them.
With guns.
With guns. When they call the sheriff, the sheriff shows up, sometimes, but you know what they say? There's nothing we can do. Sure, we can cite them, we might take them, we might not. We might hold them, we might not. There's nothing we can do. They are told that by the department, they are told that by the sheriffs. Please don't let them be told that by you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume. Thank you, Chair. You know, as you all heard from the previous items, we can't get into too much of a back-and-forth, but I want to commit to you, Ted, and any of you that are represented by UPE, I'm happy to sit down and meet and explore solutions, ones that we can do. But as you know, I know that the two agents from UPE know, and hopefully you two know, the problem emanates from legislation that comes out of that white domed building over there. And until we get them to change and allow us to have some consequences for these actions, now, look, I am, these kids have had a rough go at life, and so I'm not looking to come down on them, but they need, they need a little bit of love and care and guidance that they're not receiving right now. And the fact that the kids who do want to go through the system and are trying to be, you know, quote-unquote, "good kids" don't feel safe in a welcoming home, that's antithetical to what we're trying to do. So I'll make that commitment to you right now. Please reach out to me, and we'll sit down, we'll try and craft something.
Supervisor Serna. Thank you. And thank you for the testimony reflecting your experience. This is very, obviously, very troubling. I'm especially concerned for staff safety as it relates to what we've already seen happen with law enforcement who come in contact with fentanyl. It's not just a, you know, a drug that unfortunately is very prevalent in our community these days. It's so toxic, just casual exposure to it can put someone into the throes of respiratory failure. So when I hear that there's clouds of meth smoke and other drug use that's occurring in these locations, I'm extremely concerned that, you know, we could have a tragedy on our hands in the not-too-distant future. So I'm looking to you, Ms. Qatari, to look into this as closely as you can. I don't have any reason to not believe what I've heard, and in fact, I would encourage us maybe to look into the prospect of maybe surprise visits, if necessary, to really see what's going on for ourselves.
Thank you. I have more to say, but I will leave it for another day. That takes us to our consent items, item two through 56. Does the clerk have notes?
I do. My first note is on item number 11, and I'll read that into the record. Certify the final supplemental environmental impact report, adopt the California Environmental Quality Act, findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approve the Watt EV Innovative Freight Terminal Project. Yesterday evening, we received revised material for Attachment III, and I just want to call that into the record. This is the mitigation measure BR-2, page one, and there was a one-word change. For item 19, you're adopting an ordinance amending section 90 of ordinance number 703 to revise the speed limit zone on Hazel Avenue. Establish new speed limits for Titan Drive and Waterman Road, and revise the speed limit on 18th Street. You waive reading on this on May 7. And then for item 33, you're acting as a Sacramento County Water Agency, and you're introducing an ordinance amending Sacramento County Water Agency Code Title IV, Sections 4.20.030 and 4.45.040, to extend the inner-zone loan repayment period and limit the initial water development fee payment to $200,000 when the required 15% payment exceeds $200,000. You're waiving reading on this and continuing to June 4 for adoption. And that concludes my notes.
Thank you. Is there any member of the board that has any questions or items they would like to pull from the consent calendar? I see no one punching in. Is there a member of the public or members of the public that would like to address the board on an item that is on consent?
We do have public comments about three speakers for item number 11, and I've already read that into the record.
Great.
So our first comment speaker is Ms. Edith, or, excuse me, Edith.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm Edith Thatcher, and I am with the Board of the Environmental Council of Sacramento. On May 17, the members of the Board of Supervisors should have received a letter from Ecos and the Friends of the Swainson's Hawk. I would like to enter the letter into the record for this item 11, and I'll just summarize a couple of the points. We appreciate the responses that were made to the DEIR. However, we remain concerned that the project does not mitigate impacts to the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan and listed species, particularly Swainson's Hawk and Giant Garter Snake, to less than significant. We urge you to add an additional mitigation measure. Add a requirement that the applicant obtain an incidental take permit from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. As lead agency, the Board of Supervisors can require that the incidental take permit to obtain state oversight of mitigation measures to ensure reduction of project impacts to less than significant and to ensure that the project is fully compliant with state wildlife There are millions of federal and state dollars funding this project, as well as contributions from the Sacramento County. So it is inappropriate for the county to avoid compliance with state and federal environmental protections. The county's obligation is to reduce impacts to less than significant. The failure to require an ITP from the CDFW belies that claim. Thank you for this opportunity to review and comment on a project that promises environmental benefits for our region.
Thank you, Ms. Thatcher. Dawn Whitney.
Hello, good morning. I'm Dawn Whitney from District One. Thank you for taking the time to allow us to speak to item 11 on the consent calendar. I'm here because I've looked at rules governing county meetings, and controversial items are prohibited from being on consent calendar, so I'm hoping this can make its way to the agenda. As you know, the final SER is obviously controversial, given the letters submitted by environmental groups such as Ecos and Friends of the, excuse me, Swainson's Hawk. There are serious and legitimate issues about environmental harm, compliance with SEQA, as well as the legality of proceeding without the necessary take permits required by federal and state wildlife agency, all the while accepting federal funding for the project. With the debate, if this goes to debate, mitigation is on the table, transparency is provided, and a premature outcome is avoided. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Fargo.
Well, thank you very much. Whoops, I beat myself. Good morning. Thank you for giving us the time to speak to this item today. My name is Heather Fargo, and I am currently a member, board member of the Environmental Council of Sacramento, and I am chairing a group called the Natomas Team. Our mission is to educate the public, as well as our elected officials, about the impacts of the proposed developments in the Natomas Basin and on the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan, our economy, and our communities. The Watt EV project is a good project. You can't argue with charging stations and getting diesel trucks replaced with electric trucks. It's a good project, but it's in the wrong location. It should either be in Metro Air Park, or it should be in Sutter County, in already permitted lands, not south of I-5, adjacent to habitat and in an agriculture land. Alternative sites weren't fully analyzed or considered, and those sites would have had much less significant impacts. We know the county is not a signed member of the Natomas Habitat Conservation Plan, but you did choose to get federal funding, and that should have triggered a NEPA compliance process, and more significant mitigation should have been done. Not signing on to the HCP doesn't give you a pass on ignoring it, or ignoring the impacts of projects like this. This is clearly a growth-inducing project that will put further pressure on developing in the farmland and habitat areas of Natomas that should be protected for the species. in the farmland and habitat areas of Natomas that should be protected for the species managed by the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservancy. Back in 2003, when I was mayor, I helped establish the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan. It was 20 years ago. It mattered then, and it matters more now, given how much we know more, how much we know more we know and recognize about climate change and the value of farmland and carbon sequestration. We'll be back as other projects impacting the Natomas Basin habitat move through the process. But thank you today for your time and attention, and we hope that you can see your way to applying for a take permit so that we can see the proper mitigation done and oversight from the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So I appreciate the three speakers that have joined us here this morning to express their concerns. I certainly am well aware of what has been communicated in writing from Friends of the Swainson Hawk and Ecos. And I was so interested in what they had to share that I did have a meeting with our county council's office yesterday to understand better what our legal footing is relative to what we currently have in our EIR, in terms of mitigation measures. And with the one-word change that has been cited by our county clerk today, I was informed that that footing is very strong. So I think this is a case of respectfully disagreeing about what some believe is controversial. I think this is hardly a controversial project, as has already been cited by those that perhaps want to see this in a different location. I would argue this is a perfect location, and it's a reasonable location, given the fact that it's not just about Watt EV looking to secure a site here in Sacramento County. It's the fact that this is part of a greater network of heavy freight movement by way of battery-electric vehicles, heavy-duty vehicles, that extends all the way from the Port of Long Beach to the Oregon border. It has to run along the spine of I-5. It's not going to run along the, you know, it's not going to meander its way up through the state of California. It belongs on the spine of California. This has been cited by Ms. Fargo. Will do, you know, great things in terms of our common interest in responsibly addressing climate change, carbon emissions, making sure that we move closer and closer to fully electrifying our transportation options here in the state of California. So it's not just about Sacramento County, it's not just about the airport, it's not just about Natomas. This is about doing what I think most Californians would agree, which is continuing to lead the globe with responsible policies and implementation of those policies, and seeing great projects like this get us closer to carbon neutrality and, you know, the common interest of addressing climate change. So I'm eagerly waiting to support the consent agenda today with this item on it, as has been amended and thoroughly reviewed legally. And with that, Mr. Chair, if there are no more speakers on consent, or do we have other speakers?
We do.
Okay. But I'll be moving consent later.
Thank you. On item number 6, Ted Samara.
I'll read that into the record. This is authorizing the execution of the lease agreement for the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services at 8520 Younger Creek Drive.
Good morning.
Morning.
Supervisors. Supervisor Kennedy is the chair. We heard a lot today. You know, I'm here to speak on not only this agenda item, the welcoming home, and yet another lease agreement, but more needs to be done. I mean, we heard from these families here. I believe there's still the public health order, racism that still exists within Sacramento County. And I understand, and I appreciate Supervisor Hume, if you wanted to reach out and speak more with my members that work in those welcoming homes. But collectively, we can work on changing the working conditions, the environment, the culture of Sacramento County when it comes to providing resources, not only to your constituents, but also to your employees. I understand we have, there's a lot of hurdles, a lot of red tape we got to get through in the Foster Youth Act itself. I totally get that. But we have to do something yesterday to address what's going on here today. And collectively, we can do that. We got to come up with some better working conditions, some better policies, some better procedures. You have a slew of team here, very bright individuals that can do that, that can work with labor to get the best working conditions for our members. We don't need another residential house, we need a facility. And you have budget hearings coming up, there's monies there. Start looking at and being innovative. I appreciate Ms. Kathari, when she sits out the WOLO Policy Board, and she states, "We need to be innovators." That's everybody in this room. We need to be innovators. We need to think about better ways in which we can provide services to the youth, to your constituents. We represent members throughout this whole county, 3,800 from UPE. So let's do it. Let's sit together, let's put our heads together, let's make it better. Give the resources to your employees so they can care for these children. Give the resources to the Sheriff's Department and what they need, in which they can help vet, so tragedies like this do not longer occur, because you owe it to the youth and to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samara.
Includes your public comments, Chair.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Okay, and for item 57, this is a presentation of resolution recognizing Older Americans'
Good morning, Board and members of the public. It's great to be here today to introduce the proclamation proclaiming May 2024 as Older Americans' Month, and it's only appropriate that I make this presentation. Sacramento County communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and walks of life are connected, welcomed, included, and supported in their quality of life pursuits. Nationally, May has celebrated as Older Americans' Month, a time to recognize and honor County of Sacramento's older adults and their immense influence on every facet of American society. 2024 marks the 60th anniversary of Older Americans' Month. Older Americans' Month acknowledges a growing population of older adults who are the pillars of our community. 79,396,168 Americans age 60 and older are in the United States currently. 8,492,450, and there will be a quiz, are in California, and 336,234 residents age 60 and over in Sacramento County. The County Adult and Aging Commission is commended for its advocacy since 1994 on behalf of older adults, people living with disability, and caregivers. The commission assists in ensuring that older Americans have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities, reflecting our commitment to inclusivity and connectedness. Sacramento County also celebrates the partnership of the Aging Agency on Aging Area 4 in providing the Senior Connection Program to support older adults in establishing social connections after the isolation of the pandemic years, and its leadership of the Aging and Disability Resource Connection, a no-wrong-door consortium of community providers who enable people of all ages, incomes, and disabilities to access a wide array of long-term care, services, and supports in alignment with the California Master Plan for Aging. Sacramento by proclaiming, Sacramento County by proclaiming May 2024 as Older Americans' Month, it's more than words, we do it in actions every day in the various agencies that we support and the volunteer efforts that, we'll even hear some of those later today, but it's incredibly important to recognize this important month. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Kennedy and Board. My name is Melissa Jacobs, and I am your Deputy Director for Senior and Adult Services. I want to thank you for your vision and commitment toward ensuring that Sacramento County is a place where individuals of all ages and disabilities can live and thrive. Every year in May, we acknowledge and recognize and have the opportunity to recognize the contributions of our older adults and take note of the changes of trends in aging, renewing our commitment to serving our older adults in our community. And as mentioned, this year's national theme for Older Americans' Month is Powered by Connection, which recognizes the impact that relationships and social connection have on our health and well-being. We can create powerful impacts when we connect and collaborate with one another, and one example of that with this board is your allocation of, at one time, $500,000 through former supervisor Natoli. Identified, these funds are helping to prevent eviction, loss of housing through emergency financial assistance, providing respite care for families, family caregivers, and will soon fund micro grants to local community organizations, creating programs to increase connections for seniors and adults with disabilities. I would also like to thank our partners, the Adult and Aging Commission, who is celebrating their 30 years, and they have helped to lead our community toward being part of an age-friendly network, and they continue to influence that work as they participate in developing the Local Aging and Disability Friendly Action Plan, which will come before your board later this year, as well as our Local Agency on Aging, who is a contracted partner that celebrated just 50 years last year, and they continue to implement and enhance services and programs that highlight the power of connection, such as the Access to Technology, the Senior Connection Program, and respite for caregivers. So I sincerely value and appreciate your partnership in the sometimes, but always joyful and rewarding work. So thank you very much.
Yep, we can have anybody we want.
Adult and Aging Commission.
Come on down. Wait, wait, we heard him. He's scratching my head.
I was going to get you a motion.
Come on down.
Thank you.
Item, item 58 is the presentation of resolutions recognizing the Adult and Aging Commission Five Over 50 Awards.
Hi again.
Welcome back.
Good morning again. I am still Melissa Jacobs, still your Deputy Director for Senior and Adult Services. Today, we are honored to recognize the Adult and Aging Commission Five Over 50 Outstanding Volunteers. Volunteerism creates thriving, age-friendly, and welcoming communities of all ages. Volunteers bring wisdom, expertise, knowledge, and skills that help Sacramento County achieve its vision for an engaged, safe, informed, and livable community. The volunteers recognized today have volunteered in Sacramento County for a combined total of over 111 years. We'll be sharing a short video shortly, or a short video, to highlight some of their accomplishments, but I'd like to express sincere thanks to these amazing individuals that are here today, who are not just this year's honorees, but also leaders in our community that we can all aspire to emulate. So thank you very much, and I think we have a video.
You can go ahead and play that now.
This is so, it struck me very funny that I am receiving an award for something that I love doing. I did this selfishly because I wanted to take care of some second-hand books that I acquired, but then I just began volunteering. I thought it'd be, oh, just the fun thing to do, and here I am decades later, still doing it. I don't have any plans of quitting. As long as I can do it, I will.
Why do we do it? Because we love, we love our waterways, we love our wildlife. Actually, it's keeping me healthy, more stronger. My core is, we call it, we have a name for it. Instead of CrossFit, we call it Creek Fit. They offer four to five, sometimes six, seven cleanups a week. So when I can come, I just, in there, you know, I want to help.
Imagine with Sacramento without this river for everyone to enjoy, walk, swim, bike, whatever they do. I've always enjoyed being in the out-of-doors and living near the river. I just spent so much time out here, either on the water or on foot, walking. You've got to get rid of the trash, otherwise it's not enjoyable for people if you're walking down here and see a bunch of trash. It's important to keep it, and I enjoy doing it.
Cleaning up the American River Parkway started in about 1985. Every day that I'm in the office, I'm out cleaning up the American River Parkway. Take my walk, for my lunch, I got a little three-mile cleanup area. I found the parkway, I liked it so much that I just started figuring that if you love something, you take care of it.
It originally started from one of the local pastors and some of the outreach consultants at the schools. The way I got involved was I went to a few of the meetings, and it was like they were asking for volunteers to do stuff. And my hand, I would raise it because nobody else did. I love what I do. I love helping the people, the volunteers that we work with. I think, you know, I'm very fond of all of them, and we work well together. But I didn't want to just sit home and do nothing. I wanted to be out in the community, helping as much as I could.
Good morning. Wow, that was nice. I didn't expect that. Good morning, Chair, Board of Supervisors, and Staff. I'm Deborah Bonner. I'm Chair of Sacramento County Adult and Aging Commission, and this is such a wonderful day to celebrate. First, let me say with gratitude, thank you to the commissioners that made this special event possible. They work very hard. Teresa Abba, Don Angelo, and Kristin Strauss, who coordinated all of this, along with the support and great work from the Sacramento County staff. We are pleased to be here to honor and give recognition to amazing individuals that believe in service to their community. You are an inspiration in showing us that being older is an asset, a benefit, and that the purpose of doing does not stop at a specific age. The honorees here are today, the honorees here today are models of lifelong teachers by sharing their experiences, knowledge, giving of self, and making our community stronger and better with their generous wisdom. Your volunteer work is the true power of connections, as you are active and a living resource. Thank you, honorees, for what you do for all of us in volunteering in our community. Congratulations, a well-deserved recognition.
Well, I'm glad for the video because it means I don't have to read all of this, so. But I do want to say, and we're going to take a photo of all of us down in the well after we present the resolutions, but... Now, Board members, you can say a few words, or we can just meet down in the well and take a photo.
Mr. Chair, I'll just start by congratulating all of the folks that have done such great work. And I just wanted to reflect on the fact that I, when we say these days, "Oh, I had a senior moment," usually it reflects on maybe forgetting something, what have you. I will tell you that I had my first senior moment a couple of weeks ago when I found out I was eligible for the 20% discount at Walgreens on Tuesdays. And note that you can get that 20% discount today, so I would encourage you to do so.
All right. If the recipient has to join us?
All right, everybody smile.
All right, one, two, and three.
Hold that.
Hold it, yep, there we go.
Oops. Next item, please. And you all have important volunteer work to do. You don't have to stay for the rest of our meeting. We're going to take a short recess. Okay, we will call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll to reestablish a quorum?
Yes, Serna.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Next item, please.
Item 59 is County Service Area Number 10 Benefit Zone Number Three Public Hearing to Establish a Service Charge Within the Wild Hawk Creek Subdivision.
So you did so well last time, you're just keeping Joe out in the audience.
Okay, good morning, members of the board. My name is Don Pimentel with the County Engineering Division. The Wild Hawk Creek subdivision is located on the south side of Gerber Road, approximately 1,650 feet east of Bradshaw Road, and proposes 76 residential lots. During the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to annex and participate in County Service Area 10 Benefit Zone 3. As a result, this project proponent submitted a request to annex and establish service charges. These charges provide extended transportation-related services that can reduce vehicle trips for the purpose of improving air quality. On March 26, 2024, the board adopted Resolution 2024-0201, annexing the Wild Hawk Creek subdivision to Benefit Zone 3, the Sacramento County Service Area Number 10, and set a public hearing for today concerning the levy of the service charges. A notice and ballot protests were mailed to the property owner on April 6, 2024. This item proposes the levy of an annual service charge of $126.88 per family, single residential lot. If there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider written and oral testimony, and objections and protests, and close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board at this time on this item?
We have no public comments.
And I see none in the audience, so we will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to tabulate the returned ballots.
Okay, I received one ballot, and I'll get that. Okay. We received one ballot. The legal owner is, excuse me, Taylor Morrison of California LLC, and this is for parcel numbers 122-0010-013 and 122-0010-014, and the site address is Gerber Road, Sacramento, California, and they are in favor of the proposed annual change.
All right. Would you please read the changes into the record?
Thank you. Since there is no majority protest, I'd like to read in the changes. At the close of, in Section 2, at the close of the tabulation, the board received zero oral and written protests by which the board has duly considered. In Section 3, at the close of tabulation, the board received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the service charge and 0% was in opposition of the service charge.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, the second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. You're batting a thousand.
Hey, for.
Next item.
For Item 60, this is the Sierra Gateway LLC Development Agreement Amendment, an amendment to an existing development agreement for a property located at 8220 East Stockton Boulevard in the South Sacramento Community. The environmental document is exempt.
Okay, before we get the staff recommendation, I will show my cards early, and that's that I'm not prepared, being that there's still some information that is outlying to either support staff's recommendation or deny staff's recommendation, or go with what the proponent has proposed. I still have some questions as far as what are the ramifications of going either way, and so I will be asking at the end of the presentation that we continue this item, but for no longer than 60 days. This has been languishing long enough, and it's time that we, you know, hear this item and get it in the rearview mirror, as they say. Supervisor, you.
Well, I'm not sure about procedurally, but there are two items to contend with.
Yes.
You're asking to continue both?
Yes. Okay. With that, I just took all the wind out of your sails. Go ahead and start your presentation.
No problem. Good morning. Emma Patton here to present the Sierra 99 Gateway LLC Development Agreement Amendment. So the development agreement relates to an existing billboard located between East Stockton Boulevard and Highway 99 within the South Sacramento Community. In July of 2014, the board approved a use permit to allow the digital billboard, along with some other planning entitlements. At that same time, the county entered into the development agreement with Sierra 99, which included a provision for financial compensation, which vested development rights for the billboard. The financial compensation provision requires the applicant to pay the county annually for a 30-year term, starting at $60,000 per year for years one through five, $80,000 per year for years six through 10, and $100,000 per year thereafter for the remainder of the 30-year term. We are currently in the ninth year of the development agreement's term. Sierra 99 owned the property when the digital billboard was installed and was responsible for the sign's infrastructure, but Outfront Media, an advertising company, ultimately constructed and operates the sign pursuant to a lease agreement between Sierra and Outfront Media. I do want to note that the parcel ownership later changed from Sierra to Chris Vraim, a representative of Sierra 99 in 2017. Mr. Vraim provided staff with the billboard lease agreement between Sierra 99 and Outfront Media. According to the agreement, Outfront Media provides him with a guaranteed base rent. Then, Outfront Media compares the amount of the advertising amount, and Mr. Vraim gets 25% of the net revenues. While Outfront Media has paid Mr. Vraim pursuant to the lease agreement, the applicant is in default of the development agreement, as he has not made an annual payment since October of 2019, resulting in $320,000 of outstanding payments currently due to the county. In June 2021, the county provided initial written notice to the applicant of default due to non-payment, with additional notices sent in August 2022 and August 2023. In response to that initial default notice, the applicant requested this amendment to the development agreement to lower the annual payments to $35,000 from year eight to year 30, arguing that the digital billboard is economically unviable to operate under the current market conditions. This change in the annual payment amount would result in a loss of $1,435,000 in unrealized revenues for the county. In consideration of the applicant's request, staff analyzed financial data provided by Sierra 99, regional forecasting pertaining to the viability of digital billboards in the region, and other digital billboard development agreements. According to financial data provided by the applicant, between August 2015 and July 2021, Outfront Media totaled a net revenue of $1,973,281, or an annual average of about $329,000 from the billboard. Comparatively, Sierra or Mr. Vraim report a total net revenue of $113,993 between August 2014 and July 2021, with an annual average revenue of about $17,000. Mr. Vraim reports that they were not profitable for several years when their expenses were higher due to the construction of the sign's infrastructure. Since then, they have experienced some narrow profit margins in later years, including years in which county's annual fees went unpaid. Outfront Media's profits from the billboard came from the sale of advertisements for the billboard, whereas Mr. Vraim's profits come from his lease agreement with Outfront Media. As the development agreement between the county and Sierra was executed prior to the lease agreement, Sierra had the opportunity to secure minimum annual lease payments to cover their costs, including known costs, to cover the annual payment to the county at that time. Therefore, staff concluded a lease agreement with more profit or expense sharing could have left Sierra more profitable as it relates to this billboard. Staff did reach out to predominant billboard advertiser in the county, Clear Channel, to learn more about the regional market conditions and forecasting. Clear Channel noted that digital advertising is up about 24% in 2022 compared to 2021. They did note that since then, year over year, there's been about a 10.4% drop in digital revenue. However, Clear Channel does attribute this mostly to new inventory which has yet to sell. Unlike Sierra, Clear Channel is a media and advertising company, more like Outfront Media, so they do not necessarily lease out their billboards in the same manner that Sierra is leasing out their billboard. While the market continues to become more saturated with digital billboards, others in the region are experiencing increases in revenue year after year, while acknowledging that digital billboard advertising is a market very responsive to economic conditions. If the billboard was to change the annual payment provisions for Sierra as requested by the applicant, other digital advertising entities may request similar reductions to their annual fees. Therefore, it is important for the board to consider this request in comparison to other development agreements for billboards in the county. Staff identified an agreement for a billboard at 5400 Date Avenue. The agreement requires the applicant to pay the county annually at the same rate as this development agreement, however, that term is for a 20-year term compared to the 30-year term for Sierra 99. Staff is recommending that the board deny the applicant's request to reduce the annual payments to $35,000 from year eight to year 30. This recommendation is based on the lack of evidence of a stagnating and over-concentrated market, based on staff's analysis of financial data presented by the applicant demonstrating that the billboard could generate profits if they had entered into a lease agreement with alternative expense and profit sharing, and the confirmation that the, with the billboard, the other, excuse me, with the other billboards with similar development agreements in the county have no issue paying the similar fee. If the board denies the applicant's request to reduce annual payments, the applicant will have 60 days to cure his default by paying the past-due annual fees totaling $320,000 pursuant to Section 7A1 of the development agreement. If the applicant fails to pay the past-due annual fees, the county may exercise its remedies under Section 7C of the development agreement, which includes pursuing any available action at law or equity for breach and/or recovery of fees owed. If the board does choose to approve the applicant's request, county staff requests 10 days be allocated for the preparation of an updated invoice to reflect the correct past-due amount. Before I conclude my presentation, I do want to note that last week Mr. Vraim submitted an alternative request for your consideration. This was submitted after staff had already prepared our analysis and hearing materials, so this request is not necessarily reflected in the hearing package. The alternative request includes paying the county 25% of their gross revenue from the sign annually. The gross revenue would change year after year, so it's challenging to estimate exactly how much the county would receive in such an instance. However, staff reviewed the average lease revenue generated since 2015 and determined that the average county payment under this approach would be about $31,600, which is less than the original request submitted under this application. With that, I do want to note that Melina Turpin, Assistant Director of Revenue Recovery, is in attendance this morning to assist with any questions best answered by her, and I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Supervisor Young.
Thank you, Chair. I heard you, but I just have a procedural question because this is the first time during my tenure that the chair has executed prerogative in advance of an item. And so I'm just curious, either for counsel, for you, Mr. Villanueva, irrespective of any negotiation of, renegotiation of terms, I think it's irrefutable that the first finding can be made that the applicant is in default. So why wouldn't we go ahead and take that action?
So I believe that would be more appropriate to, because since they're not recommending that and I am.
Okay.
And it's strictly for procedural. If we're going to hear this again, just to keep it as a package, I don't think anything changes in the next 60 days on that particular item. I think, to be honest with you, where I was sitting, I think that part's pretty clear-cut.
Okay.
It's the second question that, you know, more information yesterday. If you would like to bifurcate them, I'm okay with that.
I would like to bifurcate then, and I would move to, concluding public comment, move to find the applicant in default under the current development agreement.
Second.
Okay. Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is the applicant here? Would you please approach?
And the confirmation that the, with billboard, with the billboard, the other, excuse me, with the other billboards with similar development agreements in the county have no issue paying the similar fee. If the board denies the applicant's request to reduce annual payments, the applicant will have 60 days to cure his default by paying the past due annual fees totaling $320,000 pursuant to Section 7A1 of the development agreement. If the applicant fails to pay the past due annual fees, the county may exercise its remedies under Section 7C of the development agreement, which includes pursuing any available action at law or equity for breach and/or recovery of fees owed. If the board does choose to approve the applicant's request, county staff requests 10 days be allocated for the preparation of an updated invoice to reflect the correct past due amount. Before I conclude my presentation, I do want to note that last week, Mr. Vraim submitted an alternative request for your consideration. This was submitted after staff had already prepared our analysis and hearing materials, so this request is not necessarily reflected in the hearing package. The alternative request includes paying the county 25% of their gross revenue from the sign annually. The gross revenue would change year after year, so it's challenging to estimate exactly how much the county would receive in such an instance. However, staff reviewed the average lease revenue generated since 2015 and determined that the average county payment under this approach would be about $31,600, which is less than the original request submitted under this application. With that, I do want to note that Melina Turpin, Assistant Director of Revenue Recovery, is in attendance this morning to assist with any questions best answered by her, and I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I heard you, but I just have a procedural question, because this is the first time during my tenure that the chair has executed prerogative in advance of an item. And so I'm just curious, either for counsel, for you, Mr. Villanueva, irrespective of any negotiation of, renegotiation of terms, I think it's irrefutable that the first finding can be made that the applicant is in default. So why wouldn't we go ahead and take that action?
So I believe that would be more appropriate, because since they're not recommending that and I am.
Okay.
And it's strictly for procedural. If we're going to hear this again, just to keep it as a package, I don't think anything changes in the next 60 days on that particular item. I think, to be honest with you, where I sitting, I think that part's pretty clear-cut.
Okay.
It's the second question that, you know, more information yesterday. If you would like to bifurcate them, I'm okay with that.
I would like to bifurcate them, and I would move to, concluding public comment, move to find the applicant in default under the current development agreement.
Second.
Okay. Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is the applicant here? Would you please approach?
Good morning, Chair Kennedy, members of the board. Chad Roberts at Heffner Law. On behalf of the applicant, appreciate the opportunity to address you this morning. Thank you, Emma, for really thorough staff report. I think that's helpful background information. I'll be brief. I represented Sierra 99 Gateway back in 2014 with respect to the original entitlement. I think back then, at that time, both the applicant and the county were optimistic about the potential for the sign to generate significant revenue. In the almost decade since, since that approval, at least from the applicant's perspective, the sign has underperformed. And in, as outlined in a letter that the applicant submitted to your board yesterday, hopefully you all received it, we looked at, as a percentage, what have the annual payments due to the county been as it relates to the gross lease revenue? And for the first eight years of operation, the county payments due have averaged 39% of the gross lease revenue. And as we look ahead to increasing payments moving to $100,000, we looked at, you know, this hypothetical scenario, how those $100,000 payments began in year one. And under that scenario, the payments due to the county would have constituted 58% of the applicant's gross lease revenue. And so I humbly submit to you that I don't know precisely what is an equitable share between the county and the applicant, but both the 39% and the hypothetical 58% had we started at $100,000 seems high. As Emma noted, when the applicant submitted this development agreement amendment application back in 2021, the proposal was $35,000 a year. Obviously, staff has not been able to support that request, and we respect that, and we've given it additional consideration as well. And we actually think a percentage structure would be more fair for everyone. It would allow for the county to share in the upside in good years and protect the applicant from the downside in bad years. We're aware of other jurisdictions in Sacramento County with digital billboards and have similar operating agreements. And they require 10% of net operating revenue. Here, as Emma noted, this is a little bit of a different structure, where the applicant is the landowner and the party to the development agreement is the landowner and not the operator of the sign. And given that structure, we thought 25% would be more fair to both sides, and that is what we are hoping you would consider this morning or at a future hearing. Emma mentioned what that would, as a, what that 25% would have meant for the first years of this lease. My math is different, and we probably need to sharpen our pencils on that, but our intent was certainly not to propose something that would leave the county worse off than the $35,000 annual payment that was originally proposed. So we would respectfully request that these hearings be continued. Supervisor Hume, to your point, the applicant does not dispute that these payments have been missed. Our hope was that the county would consider a development agreement amendment that included a percentage structure and also included the terms for the applicant to make the missed payments. We thought that would be the most efficient way to do this, and we thought would, might represent a win-win for both sides. So if you have any questions, I am here and happy to answer them. If not, thank you very much again for your time this morning.
I don't have so many questions as I do suggestions, and that's that you used a phrase I was going to use myself in that sharpening your pencil. You know, some of these numbers are a little bit, they're hard to justify and understand without the backup documentation and so forth.
Sure.
So in the next 60 days, I would strongly recommend you to reconvene with staff and negotiate something that has the basis and the history of what the revenue's been, forecasts. You know, there's just not enough information, and getting the letter we got yesterday didn't particularly help. So that's why, I mean, I think that there was probably, you know, I mean, I know I was certainly willing to support staff recommendation, but I think out of fairness of the issues that have been raised, another 60 days isn't going to hurt anybody, and maybe we can come up with something that's more equitable for both parties.
We would certainly appreciate the opportunity to do that, and I'm sorry I didn't respond to your earlier comments, Chair Kennedy. The 60-day timeline would be perfectly acceptable to the applicant, and we'd appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Hume.
Apologies, Chair. This time, I do believe my question is directly answerable by county council, and that is, I need to make the sequel finding in addition to the motion.
Yes, you should.
Okay. Can the record reflect that, or do we need another motion?
I can.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I see no one else. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the board?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay. Then I will move to continue this no later than 60 days with the direction to negotiate and clarify items that have been nebulous in the past. Please, is there a second? Okay. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Next item.
We are now at your nominations and appointments. And let me get to that. Item 61. You're continuing to June 4th the Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Sunrise Recreation and Park District. You're continuing to June 11th the Children's Coalition Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Galt Arno Cemetery District, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Rio Linda Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and the Sylvan Cemetery District. And you're continuing to July 9th Assessment Appeals Board, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, and the Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee. Your first matter today is the Ard and Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council. I have notes here to continue this to June 4th on behalf of the district. Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
Supervisor Desmond would like to nominate Zachary Yonker.
Thank you. Carmichael Recreation and Park District.
Supervisor Desmond would like to nominate Lisa Mattos.
Thank you, Chair. I didn't mean to overtalk you on the first one. Community Review Commission Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to June 11th.
Thank you. And, Chair Kennedy?
Reappoint Michael Whiteside and waive the process.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Fair Oaks Cemetery District.
Supervisor Desmond would like to continue to July 9th.
Thank you. Sacramento County Mental Health Board.
Supervisor Desmond would like to continue to June 4th.
And that concludes your nominations. And your next item is the county executive comments.
Thank you, Flo. Just wanted to announce that on Friday, we're going to release the county's budget. It'll be published and posted online. We'll also provide hard copies to each and every one of you. So if you haven't had, made plans for this Memorial Day weekend, I'll try to fill that time slot for you and enjoy reading of the budget. On a more, on equally happier note, I have a picture that I'll ask Metro Cable to show, but this is, just to celebrate, Deputy Probation Officer Dana Berger, who truly embraces probation's tagline, "Support Positive Change." And in this, they were assisting mental health diversion clients recently. The client told Officer Berger that he walked, walked to all his court hearings, his drug testing, and all the mental health services appointments that he's had, despite walking to those, to those, despite walking those long distances, he's had a positive attitude and has not complained about anything and has been completely compliant with all his program requirements. Officer Berger reached out to the Sacramento Sheriff's Toy Project and obtained a bike for this client, and this client has very appreciative at the efforts and help of Officer Berger and the court team. I think this truly shows, if the picture was up, I think this truly shows the dedication and support by the Sacramento County team of going above and beyond in ensuring the success of all our clients. So thank you, and I think, along with you, we're very proud of the things that the staff do for the clients of Sacramento County.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Chair Kennedy. I, I was a little bit surprised at our public off-agenda comments this morning, and there were a couple of things that resonated with me, and at the time, I wasn't really able to speak to it, and I wanted to speak to it at this time. I think it's appropriate. First of all, relating to Mr. Owen's letter, I'm hoping everyone on the board reads the letter. I read it and looked at some of the videos, and I was, I was not surprised, but it was packed full of information. And I want to know, I have so many questions, like if we know vaccines are disproportionately killing blacks and Latinos, as stated by Secretary Becerra, why are we not stopping the shot? Statistics show that year over year, from 2019 through 2020, there were no excess deaths. It was after the vaccine rollout, or the so-called quote-unquote vaccine rollout, that the excess deaths, particularly in young people, 17 to age 45, exploded. The vaccine is an emergency use authorization. It should have been discontinued at the time the emergency was canceled. We are informing people that the shot is safe and effective, but we have no information as to what is in the shot. We do not know, if you look at the box that the bottle comes in and pull out the paper that traditionally tells you exactly what's in that medication and what are the side effects, there is nothing. It's a blank page. And I know that because of whistleblower nurses that I've talked to. We do not know, we do know there has been an explosion of myocarditis, neurological disorders, blood clots, super cancers, sudden deaths, loss of pregnancy, reproductive issues, fetal death and deformity, and more since the rollout of the shot. Big Pharma has zero liability for the damage caused by the shot, because it's an EUA. I've requested multiple times, what can you do to help me? What is in the shot? How do we know it's safe and effective? Why are we giving it to our young people who are not dying from COVID? Why aren't we stopping the emergency use authorization? If blacks and Latinos are disproportionately killed by vaccines, are they receive, why, are they receiving informed consent? And more importantly, why are we not canceling the shot? I asked the question early on in COVID. This is something I've, that has been, I've questioned from the beginning. Is there an agreement associated with the vaccine rollout or some kind of funding that we're receiving that our county has signed on to? And I was told no. Specifically, I wonder if subject matter experts have been silenced or muzzled and agreed not to say anything. And so now I'm asking if Mr. Villanueva and county council and public, and our public health officer can investigate and give me answers to these questions, these specific questions that I've asked. And I hope, I hope you'll respond to me. Secondly, I want to talk a little bit about this, I wasn't aware that this was coming to our board, so I haven't looked at it. There were, I did briefly look at the information that the We the People group brought regarding election, our elections. And I've had meetings over and over with our registrar voters and Mr. Villanueva and others who have been very helpful, and I honestly feel that our county staff is doing everything they can to have election integrity. But we received information in here that is stating that there are lawful reasons why our elections are not lawful, and they've asked us to respond in a specific period of time. And so I'm asking if county council can respond to their questions. There were questions in this packet that were very specific to the law and the Constitution. And so I guess my special request is, could we have a response from our county council to help us sort through this within, you know, 10 days or so, so that we have time to do our own due diligence as well? Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Just wanted to make note of some recent events I had the opportunity to participate in. The first is, last week, I had the opportunity to join Troy Givens and Rick Bellas at the new Target Cold Storage Distribution Center located in Metro Air Park. It's a brand-new 600,000-square-foot facility. It's beautiful inside. Had a chance to meet many of the new employees. It's just, that operation alone is going to employ 500 people. Interesting fact, the number-one food item that Target has, makes special accommodations for is the banana. And they actually have very specific banana storage facilities there to ripen them on time, which I thought was fascinating. I did have a chance to do a ribbon cutting and congratulate everyone involved, and I certainly made the point to acknowledge our very skilled economic development and community development leadership. Second thing I wanted to make mention of, I was able to join Supervisors Desmond, Hume, and Kennedy last Friday at their GSAC Annual Awards Dinner on the other side of the river at Drake's at the barn. And we were very, all very proud and was glad, glad to see this happen, that our own Cindy Nickel with County Airports, our airport director rightfully received the competitiveness award. And so again, it's yet just another reminder to the business community and to everyone here in Sacramento County and beyond that uses our wonderful airport, that we enjoy terrific leadership that makes it that way. And so I just wanted to make mention of that and acknowledge again the wonderful job that Cindy and her staff are doing out at SMF.
Very appropriate. Thank you very much for bringing that up. And with that, we do have one closed-session item, and we will churn in the memory of all those bananas.
[laughing] Next.